Looking at the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan shows this area being an urban residential area, which the urban residential area has a density of eight point three eight units per acre. And what's being proposed is eight point three eight units per acre. And the urban residential classification of the future language plan of the comprehensive plan has a range of eight to 20. So we are within the range of the density recommendations of the urban residential category within the comprehensive plan. And this proposed project also reinforces housing diversity goals by providing needed infill development, particularly in the north portion of Salina. On page six in your staff report, we do have some suggested findings of fact for you to look at and consider that kind of summarized the report. The planning commission has the following options. You could approve the conditional use permit as submitted. You could approve with conditions or revisions. You could postpone for more information. If you do that, we would want to have a specific date we postpone to. You could deny the proposed conditional use permit if the appropriate findings of fact to approve it cannot be made. Staff's recommendation, we would recommend approval with the following conditions. One, that full compliance with all applicable building codes and fire code requirements be met with the proposed dwelling. Number two, that revised landscape screening plan that includes additional shrubs would be required. Number three, that construction of the proposed dwelling unit would be in substantial conformance with the plans that were submitted for this review. So here's some elevation drawing. It's a 660 square foot dwelling, one bedroom, one bath. So it's not a large structure, but this gives you an idea of the floor plan as well as the building elevations of what was proposed. So with that, we take any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Destin. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? All right, hearing none. Would the applicant like to share any thoughts?
I never turn down a chance to operate, talk. My name is Gary Hobbie, and I represent the Community Housing Development Corporation of Central Kansas. Destin referred to us as the Salina Chodo, and that's what we kind of go by because saying the name of the corporation is a little bit lengthy. We are an organization of 501(c)(3) recognized by the city, the county, also the state of Kansas, Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, as well as Kansas Department of Commerce. We're also recognized by Housing and Urban Development in Washington DC through the office in Kansas City. And the reason why I say that is because we are in a process of looking at building an additional rental unit for our properties. In 2022, we purchased 44 rental units from the Salina Housing Authority. Every one of those units are low to moderate income units. And we have about a third, if not a little more, depending on the week or the month, more than a third of them are clients that have housing assistance, so they have voucher program that they work through. So in other words, their income is in either the low, very low, or they're off the charts. As a matter of fact, they have some of their rental that they receive, the funds that they receive, we receive the funds from the Salina Housing Authority, which is passed through from HUD, and that pays for their rent. So we have several that are actually 100% paid for through their voucher. And we have some units that are what we call market rate. HUD requires us to keep 80% of our properties at low to moderate income. So if you talk about low to moderate income in Salina, Kansas right now, 2026, 63,300 is the, what we call the median income for our county. Of that, 80% is our maximum figure that we can use for when we do income qualifications for our tenants. So somewhere neighborhood of $45,000, $46,000, something like that, for a single person is the maximum dollars we can take for an income and be a client of ours unless they're in that 20% bracket of where we could go to nearly market rate. Now, I keep saying market rate, but I hate to tell you this, it's not market rate like you would see in every market, every apartment complex is being built or anything of that nature. We still are under the guidelines of HUD, so it's HUD's market rate that we get to work with. Now, we do not get to set our own rates, okay? They tell us that a one-bedroom house gets so much money, a two-bedroom house is eligible for so much, a three-bedroom is eligible, four-bedroom or a five-bedroom home. So our 44 units right now, about 89% of our occupants are low to moderate income persons or families. We have a lot of single mothers with children that live in our units, and we have challenges on a month-by-month basis for those people that are renting from us. That challenge includes the fact that they have to, on a monthly basis, report to the Salina Housing Authority their income for the prior month. And then their rent is adjusted either up or down depending on the income that they had. So we don't know from one month to the next how much we're going to be getting, receiving through the vouchers, and how much we're going to be receiving from the client themselves. So we have a very gracious opportunity as Mrs., we have a couple of board members with us today. Ms. Cochran is our office manager, and she's been hounding us for the last six months or so, saying, "I need more one-bedroom apartments." We have one in our inventory. We have one five-bedroom in our inventory. We have seven four-bedrooms. We have 19 three-bedrooms, and we have 17 two-bedrooms. And Ms. Cochran keeps them busy and full every month. There are very, very few months that we don't have somebody coming into our office to actually fill out an application. She had, we had a board meeting today, and during that board meeting, she got another call for another applicant that wants to fill out applications. So we almost have a waiting list of clients that we want to work with. So our 44 units are strung out everywhere, from the north part of Salina to the very far south of Salina. And so we have been able to work over the last few years to build a system set up to where we had for about a year and a half, full-time person working our maintenance for us because HUD, in their graciousness, in 2020, when we had COVID, were required to stop doing any and all repairs on their properties unless it was an extreme emergency. So in 2022, now you understand what we're going through. We have issues and concerns with all 44 houses that we've had to work on and fix up. But we've been able to do that over the last couple of years, and now we're down to the point where Ms. Cochran only works on a part-time basis, doing our office management work, filling our units. And also, we have one part-time maintenance person who works on an on-call basis, on-call for about three days a week, something like that, two and a half, three days. So we're very pleased to be able to keep up our rental units. We'd like to be able to add to our rental units another one-bedroom house. And we've picked a house that is, as you mentioned and seen before, is a pretty small little house. We want to stay in that small market because we feel like there is a market for it in our community, as Ms. Cochran would tell you, that she's had several people wish to do that. So you start asking, "Why would the Chodo want to build a new house?" Well, it's in 2000 and early 2000s, we started a program to where we wanted to build quality homes for low to moderate income families at a very reasonable rate, and that's what we started out to do. It was very difficult for us to get our feet on the ground. All the banks said, "Yes, thank you very much, go, go, go." But we didn't have any equity, we didn't have any homes we owned, we didn't have any land we owned, we just had a piece of paper saying, "We're good people." Finally, in 2016 and 2017, we applied to the Dane Hansen Foundation. Dane Hansen has worked on a very similar program. It's in Hayes, Kansas. They gave several hundred thousand dollars to that community so that contractors, they gave it through the Development Corporation, they gave that money to, or they would loan that money to various developers, contractors in the area. They would go in and purchase a house, remodel that house, and then they could sell that house back on the market. We wanted to use very similar program here in Salina, so we tried the same type of a program. We need some money, we want to work only, though, with low to moderate income, and we want to try to work with as much as we can, first-time homebuyers, but we do want to do an ownership program. So our goal was to get people out of the rental program into their homeownership. Well, they turned us down twice, so we had some opportunities to go out and do some other things. Luckily, the Greater Salina Community Foundation president came and talked to us one day and said, "What do you need?" Well, half a million dollars, million dollars, we don't care. Whatever the number is, we just want to be able to start purchasing some houses, getting them to remodel, and then getting back into the ownership of another family. They did come up with a benefactor who actually did give us some funds. And in 2019, we started our first program. We bought our first house online, it's over on Riverside in Kansas, and we remodeled that project and sold that project and started our fund back to replenish our funds and that type of thing. Now, you start thinking, "Well, I used to making all this money on the extra profits and that type of stuff." Every dime we can save, we put back into the house itself because we know the low to moderate income families that we have to work with have a very limited income. And so we've been working with them to keep the house cost as low as possible. So how do we do that? We have about six or seven volunteers that put in a lot of time. One of them happens to be sitting in our office today. He's a board member but a volunteer, just like I, and we go out and we help remodel the house and that type of thing. Although we do hire local contractors for electrical work, plumbing and heating work, those type of things, because we usually pull a building permit when we get ready to do the projects. We have them inspected then, and then we have an independent inspector come in and make sure that we're ready to go before we sell the house. Some of our houses took a little longer to sell than others. Some of our houses, we had zero profit in because we had so much money wrapped up into them and the qualifications of the homeowner themselves moving into the system. So we have been able to work with a local developer on some multifamily projects, like Lee Loffs, Heritage Hawthorne, and been a supporter and supplier of funds for them. In other words, we receive some funds from grant funds from the state, we pass them on in a loan and a grant program to them, and they give us a little bit of benefit for us being able to save them some tax dollars and that type of thing. So we've been able to accumulate a few extra funds, not a lot, but a few extra funds to be able to work on building some new houses and new structures and that type of thing. We completed from 2019 until this last year, nine projects. All of them were two- or three-bedroom homes. They were all, if you want to call them a flip house, they were all sold to either first-time homebuyers or those people who are just moving out of rental system and are working on another loan program through the local banks. Very pleased, and there's nothing like handing instead of keys to a young couple. This is their first house that they're going to own, and they love that process. So you say, "Why are we doing this when we have a Habitat for Humanity?" We no longer have a Habitat for Humanity in Salina, Kansas. So the Chodo feels like it's our responsibility to start picking up some of the areas that Habitat for Humanity was doing. We're going to start with this little one-bedroom house and see what our market's like and see what we have to offer. Just recently, the last couple of weeks, I've been asked by two other developers, saying, "If this works, will you come over here and build here?" Well, yeah, if you'll help us get some funds to build, that type of thing, because we're limited with our funds and that type of stuff. So our, back to our little one-bedroom house, we are very excited about being able to do this. We look at various things when we start doing our remodeling and construction. We make them as energy efficient as we can. This house, we have found a structural insulated panel-type system. It's an insulated foam board that we would use on the exterior walls with sheeting on the outside for the walls and the roof. Our heating and air conditioning gentleman has already looked at the plans and says, "I don't know if you need anything to heat it with." So he's looking at like a mini-split system that would be very similar to what you'd see at a motel room, to be able to heat and cool this 650, 675 square foot building, which is really unreal and very, very awesome. It'll be one of the few that'd be in this community, and if it works, then we can maybe work that into other areas of the community and see what's going to happen. So we're excited about being able to do the program. Our only concern, our only concern with building this project is the landscape requirements that are included. Now, I can't blame Mr. Hers and the city codes, I understand them, but it really does put a damper into our system. With putting in 11 trees, 25 plants, and a landscape area and 200 feet of fencing, our increased costs just almost not quite, puts four more years, if not five more years of payments in order to repay that extra work. So we've decided we will, we will do as best we can and put in as much of the shrubs and the trees that we can. We have to and will have to hire somebody to water and take care of those trees, those shrubs, because we cannot afford our homeowners, because our tenants cannot afford it, I'll put it that way, to be able to extra water, do the extra landscape program, do the cleanup, fix up the tree limbs, the tree leaves and that type of stuff. Our clients have just not quite got to that point where they are capable of doing all of that on their own. So that's our only concern with the whole program. I've given you a brief rundown of what we do as a Chodo. We're excited about continuing on in the community, picking up some of the things that the Habitat for Humanity had been doing, and this would be step one. We do have one vacant lot that we own, it's up on Choctaw and Cherokee, and right now, under presentation, we're working with the Salina Technical School to have a set of plans drawn for that, and we'll be submitting them once this project has been completed. We'll use that in our renovation side of our projects, not in our rental side, but the renovation side where we would actually build a new house once we sell the one we're working on today. We have started project number 10, it's a little two-bedroom house on Sherman Street, and the heating and air conditioning is going in, and electrical work is being done, and the kitchen cabinets have been torn out, and we're about ready to start rebuilding that project. So we're excited about getting that little house, a little two-bedroom house, back on the market, hopefully this spring for another first-time homebuyer in our system. That's kind of a brief rundown of what the city of the Chodo does. We'd be more than glad to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Gary. I appreciate all that background information and education. You don't want to repeat it all, do you? Just kidding. All right, is there any questions for Gary?
Is this going to be a rental or is it going to be for sale?
Yes, it'll be a rental unit. When we purchased the housing from the housing, Salina Housing Authority, through HUD, who helped supply them with funds, we had to sign an agreement, we would keep our properties for 30 years. This happens to be on one of those parcels that we have said, "Yes, we have, we will keep these for a 30-year period." If we would be able to sell them someday, we would still be required for the new owners to keep the houses in the low to moderate income qualifications for their income bracket. So yes, it will be a rental program. And rental for a one-bedroom house is not $900, $800, $900, or $1,000, because we'd be under the HUD guidelines again, we're going to be in the low $700. And you take that times, divide that into the $90,000, it's going to cost us maybe even more with the landscape things. It takes a while for us to pay that off.
Does this, I guess that's a question for staff, does this need to be replotted to show the different housing properties or?
Because they are developing this as a multifamily residential complex, it's similar to an apartment complex that might have multiple buildings on it. So as long as they retain ownership, they can have one zoning lot with multiple dwellings on it if the conditional use permit is approved. If in the future, the properties are divested or split up, if you were to split up this single zoning lot into three separate lots, then you would get into replating, and we would come before the commission with a proposal for that. But as it stands today, as the project's proposed, there is no plating requirements or additional plating requirements from what's already been plotted.
Gary, the drawing that we have here, it shows a tree in that southwest corner, that's the existing one, I think. And then some other shrubs, let's see, there's three, five, six of them there on the east side of the house, and then two on the south. Are those, is that what you're proposing then?
This is being required of us for landscape requirements, so yes, that's what we have proposed.
That's the required.
Locations, yes.
Yeah, so they have what the landscape regulations call a landscape buffer requirement along the north and west property lines, and that's a 10-foot buffer along the north and a 10-foot buffer along the west. And that buffer is required to have a solid six-foot tall screening fence, as well as a combination of trees and shrubs that are based on the lineal distance of those buffer areas. And based on the lineal distance of those buffer areas, they would need a few more shrubs to meet that requirement. And in staff's conversation with applicant over the concerns of the landscape buffer, what we advised is that they could come to this board, and if you, as a planning commission, were to approve the conditional use permit, then they would have standing to move forward with a multifamily project on this property. In addition, they would have standing to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals to apply for a variance to eliminate the landscaping buffer on the north and the west, and that would be to the Board of Zoning Appeals discretion for that type of a variance. Because this isn't a planned commercial district or PDD, they don't have, the applicant does not have the ability to request variations or modifications of the planning commission, similar to what we would with a planned commercial district. I know a lot of times in a planned commercial district or a PDD, somebody, an applicant, might come forward with that rezoning to request special leniencies or what we call modifications or variations from the zoning requirements. Because this is not a planned district, that's not an option that's on the table, but they would have the option to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a waiver or a variance from them if this were to be approved.
When I drove that area, it looks like a lot of the homes that are there have a lack of landscaping. This would probably be a nice addition over there, but I don't want to burden the project unnecessarily or uncharacteristically of the rest of the neighborhood.
No, that's a good point. And something else that is interesting is if this were to be approved, the building is constructed, and you were to drive by, it would look like three houses on three properties, even though it's really three dwellings on one property. But from just a layperson driving by, that's what it would look like. It would look like any other home in the area, just on a smaller scale. But because the code requires multifamily be screened from single-family and two-family homes, that's where the landscape requirement comes into play.
And this board doesn't really have any say-so?
Not authority in that case, yeah, because of the specific situation. If this were a PDD, you would, but then you're looking at a different process where you're completely amending the zoning and you're going to the city commission, and it's probably simpler to do it the way that we're doing it today, and go that route.
Thank you. And I had, I'm sorry, one question instead. Did we hear anything from neighbors at all?
We did not hear anything from any of the neighboring properties, at least I didn't. I'll check with my colleagues.
No. Thank you, Gary.
And you are correct, we will, if approved, we will be moving to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That $10,000 to $15,000 worth of landscape does make a difference in our project.
All right, any other questions of Mr. Hobbie?
And again, the reiteration of the screening is because it's considered a multifamily. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. And so what that looks like is we have a condition that they amend their plan to add the proper screening, and that's, that would be a part of the project once it's approved. Now, they could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and, again, request that the Board of Zoning Appeals remove that requirement or grant a variance from the landscape buffer requirement for the property if you were to approve the conditional use permit.
Because I'm seeing the cost, not just in landscaping, but in the privacy screening, the fencing.
Right.
For that as well.
Yeah.
But it's the multifamily facet.
It is, and it's to what Mr. Hobbie has shared with you and also with staff prior to this meeting in preparations. It's not just the installation of those items, it's not just installation of the trees and the shrubs and the fencing, but it's the long-term maintenance that can be difficult to.
And I grasp that completely.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Gary. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would care to discuss this issue?
I would note, we do not have anybody on Zoom. So anybody that would wish to share or talk on this item would be in the room.
Okay, thank you, Gage. All right, commissioners, I open it up for discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve application CU 25-3 with the three staff recommendations. I think it was on page five or six, on page six.
Okay, it's been moved to second to approve application CU 25-3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you. All right, we'll move into application CU 25-6.
Yes, thank you. So this is another conditional use permit application, and it used to be, well, I'll start with the location, and then we'll get into some background. So the location is 826 Birch Drive, which is a road that is on the west edge of Centennial Park, if you're familiar with Centennial Park is, so that gives you an idea of where Birch Drive is located. And the surrounding properties are all R1, single-family, to the north, to the west, and to the south, and then you have Centennial Park to the east. And the property, which is 826 Birch Drive, was originally plotted in 1953, and the structure was built in 1976. And what the application is, is the applicant, who is Toby Vogon, is proposing to use the existing residential structure for a home group, a group daycare home. And the reason it's coming before you is because it's in occupied. So it used to be, prior to 2023, anytime you had a group daycare home, which was a daycare in which you had the potential for 12 children inside of the daycare, you were required to have an employee or an assistant care provider, and for that reason, those types of daycare requests were required to have a conditional use permit and a public hearing with the planning commission to be approved versus what was previously called licensed daycare, which was home daycares with less than 12, so like up to 10 children. And so the additional children required an additional care provider, the additional care provider basically made it into a business, which required a conditional use permit. In 2023, the planning commission and city commission, working together with the United Way, approved a text amendment to our zoning ordinance to allow group daycare homes and occupied buildings to be an administrative home occupation versus requiring a public hearing. However, it also created a new category of daycare, which is a group daycare home in an unoccupied dwelling, and that does require a conditional use permit. And so that's why we're here, as Toby Vogon has purchased the property, this will not be her primary residence, she will not be living here, no one will be living here. However, during the day, the dwelling, the structure, will be used as a group daycare home versus a dwelling, and so that requires public notification and requires a conditional use permit. So that's kind of some, a quick background of the nature of the request and the reason that we're here. And so we have the same criteria that we look at with group daycare homes and unoccupied dwellings as for conditional uses for multifamily that we just looked at in the last application. So the first item is the zoning ordinance compliance, and in this case, the zoning lot is over 6,000 square feet and has a lot width and depth that meet all of the lot requirements and size requirements, and the existing structure meets all of the setback requirements. So from a zoning code standpoint, it does meet all the development standards of the R1s. So from a zoning code standpoint, it does meet all the development standards of the R1 zoning district. The applicant, when you talk about the off-street parking, the applicant believes that sufficient parking exists for staff and parents to park and temporarily drop off and pick off kids, pick up kids. Staff would note that the off-street parking typically for group daycare homes is one of the biggest topics because that's how we handle the potential additional congestion that this type of use can generate in a residential neighborhood. And typically what that means is the group daycare home is required to have three off-street parking spaces. You're required to have one space for the care provider, one space for the additional assistant care provider, and then one space for dropping off and picking up kids. In this case, the property has an attached single-car garage, which means they have one off-street parking space for the garage. They have a driveway that's 25 feet deep and capable of parking one off-street parking space off the street and out of the right-of-way. And so there would be one additional space that would be required. And for those of you that have been on the planning commission while and seen a number of these, you know that many times what happens in a situation where you have a single driveway with an attached garage, to get the third parking space, a lot of times people install a driveway wing that widens the driveway and allows additional parking. And so that's where we are with this particular application, is needing a third off-street parking space. And looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, the proposed application says that this would expand childcare opportunities within the immediate neighborhood and also provide needed care for young children. The property does have a spacious backyard that's fenced in, and so there is opportunity for outdoor play. Staff's analysis is that childcare is needed, and that's a well-documented fact within our community. And the proposal would benefit many families in the Sunset School area. KDHE and the state fire marshal's office are involved anytime there's a daycare. So it used to be that local building code and, or building officials and the fire marshal would attend inspections and would administer local building code and fire code requirements. The state recently made an amendment to where the state is handling all childcare for the state from the, through the state's fire marshal office. So they will be the ones that will be administering the life safety elements of the building for this particular property. But staff does agree that should the property meet all of the safety regulations of KDHE and the state fire marshal's office, that the proposal, home daycare, would contribute positively to the public welfare of the community. Looking at injury to the surrounding property, the applicant notes that there will be no exterior changes in appearance to the existing building. So if you were to drive by pre or right now, when it's not a daycare, versus when you drive by after it's a daycare, you won't see any noticeable physical changes to the property or to the site. Staff would note that use is still comparable in scale to a daycare operated within an occupied dwelling. So even though this would be an unoccupied dwelling, it still would function comparably to what an occupied dwelling would be if it was a home daycare. And there, we would also agree that there's no expansion or intensity to the proposed site and that the functional difference is that introducing a daycare home in this area would have potential intensity of the property, how it's used during the daytime hours, but wouldn't really impact evening or pre-morning situations. Looking at neighborhood compatibility and the surrounding area, the applicant says that parents would remain the same as that of a resident. You wouldn't recognize it by driving by that's a daycare versus a residence. And that unoccupied dwelling after hours would probably reduce the impact of a regular residential dwelling to the neighborhood because there won't be anybody there during the evenings. Staff would agree with that assessment and would note that the neighborhood consists of primarily 1970 single-family homes and that the dwelling, if you were to drive by, would look the same as the other homes in the area, in the neighborhood. We've talked a little bit about off-street parking, but when we talk about access, there is a single-family or a single-wide driveway that's 12 feet wide. And so it is, there is off-street parking there. It's just shy of space. Staff would note that congestion sometimes can be an issue, especially at early morning drops, drop-off and pickups with home daycares. In this case, the neighborhood has housing on one side, excuse me, but not on the east side of the street or the west side of the street, but no housing on the east side of the street because you have Centennial Park. And so the likelihood that there is congestion that's being added that would significantly impact the neighborhood is pretty low in this example. On page 70 of your report, we do have potential findings for you. And the planning commission would have the option to approve the conditional use permit as submitted, approve with conditions or modifications, or number three, you could postpone to gather additional information. Number four, you could deny if the findings of fact required to approve a conditional use permit can't be met. Additionally, there are potential conditions that you could, that you could find. And that's number one, that no more than 12 children may be cared for at any one time in accordance with state standards for group daycare homes. And number two, additional off-street parking must be provided so that the property has at least three off-street parking spaces. And I don't know if I noted it in my presentation, but I know it's in the report, that the applicant currently is proposing, at least initially, to have seven toddlers and one infant. So she would be under the 12 maximum by a fair number of children. But the 12, the maximum of 12 is a standard condition that we have for group daycare homes. With that, we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dustin. Are there any questions of staff?
Dustin, I'm sorry.
If they were to build the wing for the driveway, on the minimum standards, does it encroach on the boundary lines of the neighbor to the north?
So I think what they would need to do, because there's a tree and some other things to the north, that the best thing to do is put the wing on the south side of the driveway. That's probably the most feasible way to do it. And there's also some concrete already in the front that they could kind of use. If you see that lighter strip, so there's a sidewalk that runs, there you go, Gage, right there. So they have an extra-wide sidewalk that could probably be incorporated as part of the driveway if they were to do the wing on the south side of the driveway.
Dustin, there was a letter in our packet from Jill Swinson. Do we have a location on her, where she is?
She, I think she is, she is the adjacent property to the north.
Okay.
If I remember right. We can go to GS and check that, Gage, if. I can't read it from here, so you'll have to tell me.
All right. As we're waiting on that, are there any other questions of staff?
I have one, Dustin. In the picture in our packet, there's a couple of green checkmarks on that picture. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah. So we asked the applicant to indicate where her proposed off-street parking would be. And those checkmarks are the areas at which I think she was hoping to use as off-street parking. So the garage, which is not shown on this plan, could be used as one of the off-street parking spaces. And it many times is to get the three spaces. The driveway, even though it appears to be longer than 25 feet, functionally is only 25 feet because it's the distance. The off-street parking is the parking that's provided outside of the public right-of-way. And so you have where the middle checkmark is and the cursor is, you have a property line. That's around where the property line is. And so in that situation, even though practically you might be able to pull in behind somebody that's already parked there and be out of the street, you would actually be hanging in the right-of-way. Now, this block of Birch does not have a sidewalk. So it doesn't show like you're hanging over the sidewalk or blocking the sidewalk. Where if a sidewalk ever was constructed, you clearly would be. But from a zoning code standpoint, the off-street parking is by definition off-street, not in the right-of-way. So that's the challenge with that particular plan.
And by definition, off-street would not include the garage?
It would, because the garage is a parking space that's designed off the street, if you use it for parking.
So you're saying there's not room for one vehicle outside of the garage?
I'm saying you would have one inside the garage. You would have one in the driveway. And that would get you two, and you're missing a third.
Missing a third. I got you.
Yep.
I thought that was what the checkmarks were for on there, and I wanted.
No, that's a good point. And I probably should have made certain sort of legend.
I think you explained it correctly. Thank you.
I would note, Ms. Swinson's house is two to the north.
Two to the north.
So this one right here.
Thank you, Gage. All right. Are there any other questions of staff? All right. Would the applicant like to come to the podium to speak?
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant?
All right. Hearing none, or is there anyone from the audience that would like to address the commission? Please come forward.
Before we do.
Yes.
Public comment in the room. I would note, you're good. You can go. I would note, we do not have anybody from the public on Zoom, so anybody would be in the room.
Okay. Thank you, Gage. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Filbrick, and I live at 832 Birch, which is one house south of 826. Right where the cursor's at. So I would have some questions of the applicant, but I don't know if this is the spot to have that conversation about how many children, their ages, what would be the hours of the daycare running, how many caregivers, because of course we're talking about the off-street parking. There was a party at the site Sunday evening that had many guests. And I noticed, I was in my backyard raking leaves, of course, that time of year to do that. Both sides of the streets had visitors up and down the street. And I noticed that it was quite tight for traffic going through there. And they were just regular-sized vehicles. I don't know if emergency vehicles, like maybe a fire truck, could get through that, probably. But it would be tight. We have a pretty quiet neighborhood in this area. We are at the, almost a corner of an intersection, so we do have traffic. So my concern is with the traffic and the parking that the people that would be dropping off, picking up their kids during certain times of the day would cause a problem. Of course, if it's not going to be occupied at night, there's no problem at that time. But during the day, we do have quite a bit of school traffic up and down that corridor right there. Also, what's going to happen in the summer? Are these kids school age? Are they little? If they're school age, then you're going to have more than, say she has three young kids and then the rest are school age. Well, you're going to have all those kids in the summertime. So that's going to be increased traffic during the time, during the day. Will there be a bus stop that's going to have to be established there if they're school-aged kids with a big bus there? Sunset Elementary is just right around the corner. So not knowing where these kids are going to be coming from, if they're school age, will they be coming from there? Will they be bused? Will they have to walk to the area? It's not a far walk from the school, but that would be my concern with the kids walking as well. Is there going to be any contention for bad weather? This house doesn't have a basement. So during the summer, if the kids are there, is there going to be safety for the children and all that that you want to think about? The property does, we do share a chain-link fence. And the house to the north shares a chain-link fence. My side, I have an 80-pound German Shepherd Doberman mix, not used to kids. She has never grown up with kids. She had no issue Sunday night, but I was in the yard with her. I'm not home all the time. I work full-time. When the dog will be out there, she has free access to the backyard. She has a doggy door. So she's going to be out there while those kids are out there. I don't know what's going to happen. Somebody throws a ball over. She's going to keep that ball. She's not going to give it back. That would be a concern. If little fingers get poked through the chain-link fence, what's going to happen then? I don't know. That's one of my concerns. To the house to the north, there's also a dog. It's a small dog. And it constantly barks whenever there's anybody in the yard. Even when there's nobody in the yard, it constantly barks. But it's there as well. I don't know if it's used to little kids when they're poking their finger through the chain-link fence. Will that dog bite them as well? Just some things I have concerns about. I also have been researching, and I don't know if the applicant is aware, but we have six registered offenders within a mile of this house. If you go out to check the mail and go out and look to your south, you can see one offender, sex offender residence is right there, down the block. If you go in our backyard and go out through the gate into the alley, you can see a second registered sex offender's backyard on the next street. Then there's four others within a mile. If you go down, if you go down Birch and hit Plum and then go to your east, the next street is Hemlock. There's one around the corner on Hemlock, three houses down, another offender. All these people are registered on the Kansas site. You can look. That's free information. Anybody can search that. And that's a concern for me. There's another one on Redwood, which is not too far down. And there's one on Choctaw and Comanche as well as Cherokee. So that would be a concern with children in the area if they have to walk from the school. That would be something else that I would be worried about. I am not in favor of turning our quiet neighborhood and having a business next door. I'm from North Carolina, so I probably will be going back to North Carolina at some point. I'm not ready to sell. What will that do to my property of being able to sell it? Does somebody want to buy a house that's next to a daycare? That would be a question and a concern for me. What will it do for my property taxes? That's another concern. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who would care to address the commission?
George Mahon, 809 Willow Drive. And evidently, I'm within the area because I got the letter. I don't have nearly as good proposal as the last lady did. But my main concern is with the safety of the children and number one, with the changes to the licensing for daycare that the state recently did to where they're waiving. that the state recently did to where they're waiving part of the requirements. I would be concerned, number one, that she has a license and is aware of safe sleep issues. She's going to have one infant and seven toddlers or something. But the infants of most concern. Does she know about and practice safe sleep practices for her children? And the other thing is that 12 children, that house can't be over 1,000 square feet. And I looked into it, I mean, that's going to be a crowded place. And then you put a couple of adults in there to watch them. That's, it just don't seem that feasible to me, but I hadn't even thought about that. And of course, I'm on the next street west, Willow. And that street over there has more traffic and, and gearheads on that street than I've ever. I used, my grandkids, I've always been concerned with their safety because they've, they come by my house doing at least 60 people. It's a real long block. And they turn off a Crawford, and they just think they're on a highway, I guess, or they're on Centennial. And they just drive whatever speed they want. And that's been a real problem for years. I didn't know about a whole sex offenders in my neighborhood. Better not tell my wife. So that's my main concern, is the safety of the children. Like I said, it's a very, looking from the outside, it's hard to tell on the picture, but doesn't look like a very big house. And she brought up a good concern about the tornado, you know, safety. That, I had never thought about that. But, but my concern, and the main thing is the, is the safety of the children. I don't think there will probably be that much increased traffic. I know it'll bleed over, it will be on that street, but it'll probably bleed over to my side. But I imagine it'll be minimal. Those are my concerns. And I, and I realize you probably guys, I don't, when they have an application for this permit, you don't look into it to see if they're licensed or meet KDHE qualifications or?
Yeah, so as part of the process, the facility has to be licensed by KDHE. And the county does still have KDHE representatives. Leanne Montoya runs that program, and she's, she does inspect all daycare. So that's group daycare homes, as well as licensed daycares, and then also childcare centers. They're responsible for all of the licensing. And so, and she has been involved with this project, and she's familiar with the property. And so she will have to get a license through KDHE, well, from KDHE through Leanne Montoya with Celine County. So that is still a requirement. And then the state fire marshal's office also has to come out and inspect the property.
Right.
And so they, they have both the childcare safety requirements through KDHE that she'll have to meet, and then all of the building requirements to the state fire marshal's office that they'll have to adhere to as well. And receive inspections for before her permit can be issued.
Okay. All right, well, that's all my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anyone else care to address the commission? All right, commissioners, I open it up for discussion? Or if you have more questions of staff or the applicant?
Did we want to have the applicant come forward to address some of the concerns of the first citizen?
Well, my granddaughter turned three on Sunday, so we had a birthday party over there. So, and we cut it down at 6:00 PM, so I didn't realize it'd be a problem. So anyway, I'm not going to have 12, I'm going to have seven total. I will have a helper, part-time. So, any questions? I don't really have.
Hours of operation for this?
Just probably like 7:30, 5:15, 5:30 at the latest, probably.
In terms of number of vehicles and things, you probably have a lot of siblings, is that correct?
Do I have a lot of siblings? Oh, yes, yes.
Kids that have siblings, yes. Some of the words like, one family might have three kids.
So I have one mother that has three kids, one mother that has two, so there's already five. Yeah. It's just two families, just there.
And do you have plans for adding an off-street parking spot there? How, how do you plan to get around that?
So we were looking at, I'm not sure if we're going to do maybe concrete or gravel something on that south side, so.
On the south side?
Well, the north side is, it's pretty tight.
Right.
To the line, so I just feel like it would be wasted.
No, I, I agree.
How will you plan to address the dog issues on each side of the fence?
Well, I've never met Ms. Sylvia's dog. I have met the other one, it hit a spark. I, the other night, it was fine. I don't know, I didn't know she had a dog, to be honest.
I will assume the kids would be in the backyard during the day, different times?
Yeah, with supervision, yes.
Yeah. What's the age group of children you're going to be?
So I would say up to school age, so two years to school age. And then one or, one infant, maybe one six months, seven months. Yeah.
So with that age group, there won't be much fluctuation between school year and summertime?
Right, yeah.
I was wondering if gravel meets the minimum requirement for material for driveway?
So in the R1 zoning district, you have options of paving it with concrete, paving it with asphalt, or using an all-weather surface material such as gravel or millings. It just has to perform in all-weather conditions. So if, if the applicant chooses to lay down gravel to supplement her parking on the south side of her park, of her driveway, that would be an option. Millings would be an option, or if she wants to pave it, that would be an option as well.
One of the concerns brought up was the health and welfare of the kids. What kind of, for licensing, what kind of first aid or, or, do you have to know CPR?
Yes, and I'm double-certified right now. But anyway, yeah, so there's a whole ton of courses that you have to take, which I'm doing as we speak, and I already went to a class last week. And it's quite the process that you have to go through. As far as the sex offender list, unfortunately, I've Googled around my house. You just can't escape it. I mean, there's just, unfortunately, they're, they're just everywhere. Not just this particular home, it's, there's not more in this area over, it's just everywhere.
Is this the only location you have?
Like, I own rental properties.
Just for childcare?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you plan on being there almost 100% of the time?
And you're already currently licensed, or you're working towards?
Getting there, yeah.
Getting there, okay. So, and this will be your first group dare, group daycare home?
Yeah.
Okay, clarifying that, okay. All right, any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I open it up for the commission to discuss.
I would say that somebody who lives with a daycare in their house, most of the concerns are, you know, sorted by the regulations that the applicants have to go through to get the, to get a daycare and stuff like that. And as far as like the sex offender list stuff goes, that's up to, I think that's up to parents to, you know, make sure they're comfortable with their kids going to a daycare in that location. And in fact, there's a park pretty close by, too. I mean, I know that sometimes they can move around or go over there, whatever, too. It's really not much more different than, you know, a large number of, a family with a large number of kids living there. And the ages and everything all fluctuate throughout the years, kids come and go. I mean, the, the number is 12, but you know, infants count for more than that, so. So with that, I guess I'd make a motion to approve application CU 25-6 with the two conditions on page seven.
A second.
All right, it's been moved in second to approve application CU 25-6. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to administrative items.
We do not have any administrative items for you tonight. In terms of future business, we do not believe that we'll have any meetings in December either. So I guess we'll tell you Happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas. And we'll see you after the new year, because we likely will have some on our first meeting, in our, at our first meeting in January. We anticipate, anyway.
All right. One more time, Gage, is there anybody online?
There is nobody from the public. Actually, there is nobody on Zoom, so anybody that wishes to share would be in the room.
All right, do you have something you'd like to share? Okay, thank you. All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second.
Moved in second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.